Give it one minute. There we have, now we're live streaming. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you guys want to go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Yeah.
And we can start. I'm Stephanie Hausman, Carroll County Supervisor.
Scott Johnson, Carroll County Supervisor.
Mike Anderson, Carroll County Supervisor.
Courtney Pyer, County Editor.
Cindy Scavica, Supervisor.
I'm Josh Axon of Mid-Island Insurance.
I'm Dean Shady. I'm the Safety and Risk Improvement Manager with IMWCA.
Yeah, and first I'll start by saying thank you to Cindy. She's really, you know, taking the lead on getting this safety committee going. And, you know, I think in Carroll County, we've always been pretty fortunate that we, you know, haven't had any huge, you know, work comp issues or, you know, liability issues. But, you know, it's always good to, we haven't really had a formal, you know, program in place. So, you know, Cindy's really spearheaded that. And we've got Dean here from IMWCA. Cindy did a kind of a risk assessment with the county for, you know, any work comp issues that we saw. So Dean's kind of going to go through the, you know, what the findings were on that. So, but Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, last, last week, Bill Dickey, who is the Safety and Risk Improvement Advisor that covers this area, went through a couple of departments with Cindy and also did a basic review of the risk management procedures that the county has. And based off of his findings, we're making several recommendations to help the county do a couple of things. First, we want to help you improve your safety. You know, one of the things that Josh said that is very important is the county right now enjoys a very low experience modification factor, basically, which is the number that helps keep your workers' compensation premiums low. Couple of years ago, you did have a larger claim. It's brought that number up a little bit, but generally you are low. And part of that is that frankly, you've been very, very lucky. You know, one of the reasons that we're here today is that we've had a number of other counties post-COVID. Unfortunately, they've seen their luck run out and resulted in a number of fatalities, large claims. When that happens, obviously, one, you lose a very important asset, which is your employees. As we all know, it's very hard to find people right now. So we got to really protect what we have. Number two, when you lose an employee, have a big claim, that means your premiums are going to go way up. And right now, you guys, you know, any public entity doesn't have money to be just throwing away. So we want to help you keep that premium down. That's the benefit of being in a pool. And then the other part of it is you don't want OSHA to come in. When OSHA comes in, you know, everybody worries about the fines and in some cases, the fines can be larger. But frankly, what OSHA is going to tell you is you're missing these items. You will do them. You're going to do them at their level, which is going to be a significant investment in time and money. And the thing is, they are not going to sit there and say, oh, we understand you everything. They're going to expect you to do it and do it at their level. And if you don't do it, then the fines get big. And then the last thing that I didn't mention that we've seen with another county to the east is if you don't have safety programs set up and something happens, frankly, you leave the county very open to an employer's liability claim. There, when we start talking about fatalities, we talk about million dollar claims. We talk about employer liability claims. We're talking multi-million dollar claims. And none of it is good for anybody. So the best way to really get around this, to protect your employees, to protect the taxpayers, to protect everybody, is to really implement a full safety program. And, you know, we've started laying out some of those things. And I just want to cover, this was sent to you over the weekend. We tried to do it earlier, but we're at our annual conference and Bill's unable to get to report any sooner. But the first thing that we're asking is that the county reengage their safety committee. And we recommend that you meet monthly. I know tomorrow we're having a meeting. Both Bill, Dickey and myself will be there, but there's a number of things. Everybody says, well, monthly seems to be a lot. With what you're going to need to do, you're actually going to think monthly is not going to be enough. But, you know, the best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And that's why we're recommending let's get started monthly. We also are recommending having a formal training process for safety training. That's the thing that initially Cindy contacted us about our online safety training program called LEARN. It's free. It's 130 plus training videos for awareness level. Also, that also has a lot of other training for liability related issues. So again, we already started to work with the county to get that set up. We recommend having a general safety manual. That is the guidance for both management and the employees on how do we move forward with safety? What are the rules going to be? What are the expectations? Very hard to hold people accountable for something if they don't know what they're being held accountable for. The safety manual helps give us the guidance and helps create a base of accountability. We also recommend incident review. When a claim happens or a significant near miss, we want to know, not necessarily to hold fault, that's not what this is about, but it is to figure out what didn't work. What do we need to do to change it if we can? And then devise and implement a plan for change. The couple of other things that we are looking at is mandatory seatbelt policy. IMWCA does have a requirement that our members implement a mandatory seatbelt policy. We have a model on our website. And then finally, we recommend a return to work light duty program. Claims are going to happen. When they do happen, we want to try to mitigate the effect of that the best that we can. And deputy claims where a person loses time from work are the things that can really affect your premium. What we have found is having an effective return to work light duty program can really help reduce the effect of that loss. Also, again, when I talk about your people, you know, do you have somebody that can do 80% of their job? Do you want them sitting at home? Or do you want them home here doing 80% of their job? You know, it tells the employee they're needed. We want them. It helps you keep an eye on them to make sure they're living within their restrictions. It gives them something to do rather than sit home and, you know, watch a commercial with an attorney saying, I already heard it worked. Do you need an attorney? I mean, you know, we just found that overall, it's one of the most effective things you can do when you do have a, a large claim. So those are the, the chief requirements or recommendations that we have made. Those are the foundational recommendations. Once that we're able to work with you and get those things structured, then we can start working on the more detailed issue with a more comprehensive safety program. It's going to include what type of, I don't like to use the term OSHA policies, things like lockout, tagout, things like that. Those are really safety programs. They look at a specific exposure. And then what they really are is a blueprint of how you, as the employer, want the employee to navigate that exposure to either completely eliminate it or greatly reduce it. If you say OSHA, all the employees hear is, well, we just want you to do that so you don't get fined. You know, that's a little bit of it. The bigger part of it is, no, we want you to do this because we don't want you to get hurt or killed. And those are the kind of things that we're going to, you know, work with you on. But what we really need is for the board to say, yes, this is what we want. To talk to the other department heads, you know, in conservation, roads, public health, sheriff's department, and get everybody on board because it's going to be really a team effort to get us all to protect your employees. What questions may you have? Or Josh, anything you want to add?
Is this, is this a part of what we already do? We're adding to it? Is there a cost to this?
The, the, the cost is you're going to be, your time.
Okay.
Okay. But like the training we provided, the safety committee, you're already starting the structure. We just got to build on it more. Seatbelt policy is like anything, you just got to enforce it. I mean, and a lot of this is going to be, I talked about accountability. You're going to have to hold the people accountable below you to do these things. You're going to be accountable to the employees, to the taxpayers, to do these things to keep your rates and premiums down and so forth.
Holding others accountable is tricky, but could you put in a clause as we're holding you accountable? We hope you follow through. If not, it's right to termination. You could get terminated if you don't follow through with what the board or the safety committee.
Yeah, for the employees that you have, yeah, I mean, obviously, safety is a work rule you can adopt. So it's just, it's truly the same thing. If you have employees that, you know, just show up to work at eight in the morning, even though they're supposed to be there at 7:30 and they do it eventually, it's the same thing. Now, one of the things is understanding you have other electives that you're dealing with. I'll pick on the sheriff that, you know, you can say, we want you to be involved in this. The sheriff says, well, you know, I'm elected, I'm going to do my own thing. And not say there's a problem with the sheriff right now. I'm just using example. But you, as the board, control the purse strings. So if the sheriff doesn't want to cooperate, one of the things you can do is what we call a cost of risk allocation, where you start saying, okay, if you don't want to do it, it's fine. But when the county's premiums go up, let's say they go up 10,000, we're bringing that out of your budget. And we have a lot of other counties and cities that do that right now. It's the incentive. For the employees that are directly under you, you know, yeah, you can go through, you know, this is an engineer issue. And again, I say the engineer is a problem, but the engineer works for you. If they are not working on a safety program, then you can hold them accountable. And it can be that, hey, you know, there's no raises or, you know, maybe you're not the right person for us. You know, those are the kind of controls that the board has.
I'm actually very grateful that you brought that up. Josh's dad Terry actually spoke to me when we were down at ISAC on behalf of our county attorney. So there was a middle person, little weird, but the sheriff's department had actually gotten an accident a while ago with a county vehicle. And we do have every right as a board of supervisors to know when something like that happens as a fiduciary agent to Carroll County. We're not asking for details of who, what, when, why, where. But as a board of supervisors, we have every responsibility to taxpayers to know exactly what's going on. If the county is going to be potential litigation, but that still is county money that those vehicles are in. So that was ruined, just like Zach, you had to make a phone call a couple of months ago. It wasn't a fun one. But when we have county equipment that goes down, the board of supervisors have every right. And I want to thank your dad so much for talking me through that, that process that we do have that responsibility as supervisors.
Absolutely. And all the department heads are very receptive to this too. And in my, in my opinion, I think they, I think they do a great job of, you know, taking safety seriously. This is more, you know, to do something formal, you know, just because we really haven't had a formal, you know, procedure in the past. And along those lines, we, I don't know if you guys got the safety policy statement that we had from ICAP. It's from like 1994. So we're, we're going to go through that with ICAP too. We contacted Cindy about this and, and, yeah, we're just going, we're just going to update some of the stuff to, to make sure that it's, you know, up to date. Because like I said, the board, the board supervisors approved it in February of 94, it looks like. So just to, just to kind of update it. And like I said, all the department heads, very receptive to this. It's just more of a, you know, formality to make sure that we get, you know, get this in place and make sure that, you know, everybody's following. And most, a lot of it's kind of common sense, like a, like a seatbelt thing, like that's the law, you know? So, you know, follow the law. That's pretty, pretty, you know, easy one to do. But like I said, the, the return to work program is probably the biggest thing that you can do to mitigate, you know, if you do have a loss. You know, like he said, like you can find something, something else for somebody to do, you know, if it's not 100% their job, you know, if we can find something else for them to do so they're not just sitting at home, you know, taking work comp dollars, which ultimately comes out of, out of the county's pothead. So like I said, just a, just a good thing to get, get, you know, formally down that, that, so that all the, the heads kind of have a good, good.
You know, if it's not documented, it happened, it's basically what we have to do. You know, this doesn't cost money. It just costs time. And it sounds like a lot, but we just have to get better continuously over time. It's not going to be all fixed, you know, in, in one monthly. We just work towards a goal and make it better. That's all. And, yeah.
From you. You're going to get your feet under you two years from now. You have a lot, I mean, to catch up. And the thing is, it's not, oh, we're going to try to jump that. You want to put it together incrementally to do it right. And we have a lot of counties and cities, I mean, we, we ensure, you know, majority, 80 plus counties. The ones that we have are the ones that are really, really good at this. You know, they, they're consistent. They, they work at it. But it took them a while to, to really put it together and to get it going the way they wanted. And, you know, what say Potawatomi County does, what Carroll County, it's going to be a little different. You know, you each have your personality, strengths and so forth. But you, you can't let it dissuade what you have to do though, is just say, every month of every year, we got to get better. I'm sorry, interrupt.
No, that's true. That's.
I think that's on almost every aspect that we've been looking at lately. We want to be better.
It's really just two things. We have a responsibility to make sure that our workers go home the same way that they come in in the morning. And we have a responsibility to protect the taxpayers. That's all.
In my opinion, I think this is great. Cindy, you spearheaded this. So thank you for taking the time. And with your knowledge and experience, she has a safety background, whereas I don't. So I really appreciate her experience to the board and making Carroll County better and safer. And you guys taking the time for doing walkthroughs as well. It's, in my opinion, I say we go forward, but it's a full board.
And we're committed. Bill, Dickey, yeah, I'll be here tomorrow as well. Talk to safety committee. But, you know, as a pool, you're part of our ownership. And, you know, you display that you want to do this, you know, we can have Bill here. And I can be here, you know, two or three times, you know, over the year, maybe even more. Just depends on how, how you progress. You know, we're not just here to talk about it today. And this is the last time. We're going to be hands on with you as long as you show us you want to progress.
Do we need a formal motion for that? In my opinion, I say yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think a good place to start would be safety manager. So we understand what we're working towards and, and, you know, or how we can help other departments.
Yeah. So I was going to ask about that. So it says general safety manual. So like with your other members, do you see more as just one manual and that's for the whole county? Or does it break down into like secondary roads will have their own safety manual, conservation will have their own safety manual? How, generally, how do you guys see that? Or how's that work?
Great question. What we really recommend is having a general safety manual that covers things like the safety committee's structure, who's responsible for what. So it talks about management responsibility, supervisor responsibility, employee's responsibility. We talk about, you know, the safety committee and return to work, designated physicians, notifying claims. There's things that it's universal to everybody. Now, when we get into partnality, then we're talking more of things that are going to be, again, I don't like to use the term, but the, the OSHA relative issues. So for secondary roads, you know, what is their lockout, tagout? What is their confined space? What is their personal protective equipment? Those would be things that will be more geared to that department individually based on their specific exposures.
To both.
So you, you want both. Yeah. And there might be some cases where the safety manual may also, you're, you're going to merge that with your HR personnel manual as well.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Great question.
Thanks, Zach, for the question.
Thanks.
I think you got kind of the nod of approval to keep going ahead. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the Ricky building new pre-tracement survey. Do we have enough time to do this now before we go into a public hearing?
Well, I don't know how much we can discuss because.
I wouldn't.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So I went in there with my trophy and basically we own the wall. Then I went and looked at it and marked out we do own the walls. So I think going forward, we need to do is get bids on the wall to fix that. I know you did that one time, didn't you? Maybe or?
I contacted a couple.
Okay. Maybe we need to open up for bids.
Yeah, Scott, me and you walked over there that one day and, and there's more than just the wall. If you want to get sidewalk up there, that's all.
But we need to, we need to open up for bids and see, and someone needs to go show them maybe that you. But whatever contractors and.
It falls under the county, you know?
Yes.
That wall.
Hundred percent. So.
So Zach, would you be okay with getting?
Yeah.
Why do you do that though? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to want to define probably scope of work because.
Yeah, you won't, you won't have to put a scope of work together so that they're all the same bid. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
For sure, the wall, add in sidewalk.
Yeah. Let them throw that sidewalk out.
They'll have to. Yeah. I mean, it's.
Well, when they do the wall, they're going to have to pull it back and then re-pack that during the year anyway. So, yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, basically, we'll just do the wall and then we'll, yeah. I mean, meeting with the concrete guys to get the bids, they're going to be able to be like, well, I got, you're going to end up having to do this too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could ride around over there with you too, if you'd measure too, just going to get length and shit.
I'm sure a lot of the bidders will probably go look at it.
Yeah. See what we can do. I mean, the trigger guard's probably going to be making sure, trying to get somebody lined up before horse knows where to fly.
I don't think we have the money to do it this year.
I think it'll be next year anyway.
I think it'll be fiscal year 25.
Budget.
I'm not going to be mean, but there's probably no point in getting bids right now.
No.
I mean.
Well, I mean. We do have, we do have some money in our capital fund for improvements. So.
No one's going to get it done this year, no matter what. I promise you that. Go ahead and keep it going. I didn't realize there was money for capital improvements. But you can get, you can get the bids no matter what. We put on the spring schedule.
I can, but I guarantee you, they're all going to be like, this is going to be good for 60 days. It's like, I can't tell you that this is what it's going to be next year when I go to do it. You know what I mean? I mean, I, yeah, I can definitely say, guys, just call this, give us a rough idea of what we're looking at for next year.
And maybe potential idea on timeframe.
Yeah. I mean.
Cause I know there's a few guys out there that next year is not even a possibility. It's two years.
Right. Yep. But yeah, I'll just have to reassure them. They're probably going to reassure me like, well, I can give you this, but it might be $5,000 difference next year. You know, if concrete goes up or whatever. So. But yeah, I can start going three bids or how many are second?
Three if possible. Two necessary.
Yeah. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
You need to start coming with every knee, no? Homework assignments.
Item number three is authorize the chair to sign the CDVG down payment assistance program extension letter. Basically, this is just asking the areas of approval for me to sign this. It's extending, we did this last year as Courtney was telling me to. We did this last year to extend the program so they can use up their funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the chair or to authorize the chair to sign the extension to November 30th, 2023.
A second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, although in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is a 9:30 public hearing for the fiscal year 24 budget amendment. We have about two minutes, but. We'll wait for that. These are the, just a little bit of, these are the same things we talked about a little bit ago, but we had to push back the public hearing to make sure that the newspaper was, was printed for the public. So since we have a minute, I'm going to spend some time with our county ordinances and highlight ones pertinent to certain departments and maybe send those off, spend a little bit. So it's not so much to everybody. I can be like, is that five, seven and nine? Take a look, has any of the laws or any of that changed before we take it a step further and actually start implementing one, signing them?
I do have a couple that were turned in by a department. So I have a folder if you want to look through that.
And they needed changes?
Yes.
That's awesome. Thanks for creating a folder.
Well, we were trying to do it earlier this spring. So I had it for a while.
And then obviously at the end, we'll have to have the county attorney take a look. And if he's busy, we can always seek outside counsel to take a look at those. Wait until the motion open. Close of all, right?
No. You, 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 you open it, close it.
Yes, I'll get, I'll keep bringing boxes like I have them. And then I'll get stickers, colored stickers. Do we need bubble wrap?
You'll probably get some of the.
I'm not aware of that I need any, but they're, you know, BBS Dalton, do they want to wrap monitors and go wrap? Or are they going to just carry them down? I have no idea.
Well, the monitor is mounted directly to the desk, but it kind of makes it hard. But we were going to figure something out.
Okay. Don't, I'll have a conversation with you. All right. It is 9:30. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for fiscal year 24 budget amendment. Courtney, do you want to breeze through that?
I will. So not really any changes from the last time we talked about this, but I will review them. Couple items on the revenues. We've got the IEDACD, the CDVG down payment assistance program. So since it's running over into fiscal 24, there were some funds left over last budget year. Need to put them in this budget so we're able to extend those out. We had 141,177 remaining from fiscal 23. So you'll see that in revenues and then also expenses. Cause as you know, we get the money from the state and then we go ahead and pay region 12. So that's a, doesn't affect the budget overall. It's a zero effect. The other revenue is a $20,000. That's for conservation. They got the Timmerman grant. So he wanted to account for that in his revenues. He's also at the county court. So he wanted to account for that in his revenues. Um, he's also at accounting court in his capital expenditures. It's my understanding it's gonna be used for the paving project. On the side trail. So that covers those, um, again, they don't have any effect on the budget overall, they're in and out. Expenditures, um, the second judicial rent went up. I don't think it's done anything for like fifteen, twenty years, five hundred dollars. Well. That line item is only for second judicial rent, so we needed to put five hundred bucks in there, because there's really nowhere else to pull that from. Uh, Jamie Webker let me know in the ambulance that he wanted the five hundred dollars that he added publications. Taken out of his budget, because he didn't see that as an expense, so went ahead and updated that to reduce the publications out of his budget. And then he made me aware that we had the revenues in there for the Manning return transfers, but no expenditures. So, just a correction on the budget to get the, the four thousands already there for revenue, but we need to have it in expenses. So that is those two things, um. Uh, another couple of things on capital is all, um, as you know, the ambulance came in in fiscal twenty-four. It was a budgeted fiscal twenty-three expense. So we needed to put some money in his capital, so he can write a check to pay for that ambulance. We're putting two hundred and forty-seven thousand, G thirty-six. That's a little bit more than what the ambulance itself costs, but that is what he did have left over in his budget and capital last year that he didn't spend. So, went ahead and put that whole amount in there for him. Um, I'm not sure if he's gonna need to buy any equipment to go with an ambulance, but. There should be some additional funds there for him. Um, and the last thing is twenty-five hundred dollars for environmental health. Um, they had some excess left over in their general fund last year, and Carrie had asked if we could move some of that into their capital. For their vehicle, they don't put a lot of money in there every year for a vehicle. It's taken them a long time to build up, so she just asked her, some of their excess they could put in there, so we have twenty-five hundred dollars in there. That goes straight to environmental health's capital fund, to be used only for vehicle purchases, so. It'll be sitting in there for the time when they need to get in the vehicle. That is all I have for the budget amendment.
Have you heard anything from the public?
I have not.
Dalton, isn't, is there any public comment?
Nope.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, saying no comment. We will close it at nine thirty-four. Item number five is to, um, the appropriations resolution, which is. Whereas a public hearing has been held to amend the fiscal year twenty-four county budget as required by the Iowa code three-three-one point four-three-five. And it is roll call.
Your motion.
Uh, motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Austin?
Yes, Johnny.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. I'm gonna pass around the resolution that you've been all signed. Then I'm gonna pass around the adoption, which just requires the chair signature right here.
Next one?
No.
Okay.
No.
Next item on the agenda is the courthouse HVAC remodel project change order number five.
So this is, uh, this change order includes three line items. Um, the two thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars was for cell phone heaters to be put on the second floor and. On the first floor. That's upcoming. The twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars will be reimbursed by the state. That's court expense for upgrading the cabling and wiring up there. And. Um, the last one was the paint of the clerk of court's office, which is the change order for five thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. And that also did the hallway leading to the magistrate offices, or to the, of his offices.
Any painting that had to happen on the second floor is a part of it.
Correct. So the, the total cost to the county is seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two after we recoup. The twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen from the state. And Courtney has the correct paperwork to submit it to the state.
I'm gonna email it to Mark after the meeting.
Um, there were more, um, possibilities to, um. Modernize or make more electronic than three courtrooms. And it would have been perfect time to do it, the state chose not to do it, so they'll have to use a more invasive process when they upgrade the state of Iowa. They have their own contractor that can do it. Instead of, the timing was perfect, we thought they were gonna do it and they chose not to.
Okay.
So with those changes, there'll still be two hundred and seventy thousand ninety-eight dollars in the contingency. And then on top of that, we will reimburse the twenty-seven thousand, um, eight hundred and sixteen.
Back into that?
Yep. So it'll still be very close to three hundred thousand left in contingency after change order number five. Questions? In motion. The paint's done, the ceilings are going in this week. If you haven't been up there, the new, um, ADA check writing countertop has been installed. There's a lot of changes, I mean, it's wrapping up. Any motion?
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to approve change order number five for SEH.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seven is to approve the treasurer's semi-annual report. Lisa, do you want to come up and do the update?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today? I'm good, all wonderful. Oh, that's fine. Um, basically, twice a year, we submit the semi-annual to the board. Um, I go through the totals that I kind of cover and make sure they're in, in line. Courtney does the same with her totals. Or in sync, which is good, and, um. Yeah, the calculated treasured balance, the ending actual bank balance is the same, so that's how we like to see it. When it looks at the expenses that change in outstanding total, it's the checks that are still outstanding, um, but otherwise. I, my office actually does this monthly, so at the end of the month, after we do our bank recon, we make sure we're in line there too, in case there's any errors, so that we can get them fixed before. The six months later, but otherwise, yeah, I just make sure that revenues match with what we have on the books. And I make sure the money going in for taxes and get a portion out for taxes matches what we put on the books. Any checks that she issues, any checks that get voided, we make sure they're in line, that we have it on our books, and then. Once we run this semi-annual, we also check them after the new bank recon that matches with both cash and we're in line, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And I get a motion to approve the report.
So moved. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine is manure management annual updates. We have two of them for cornerstone, parker trip, section wall, Richland Township, no changes. Bob Danner, section twenty-two, Newton Township, no changes. And we have two committee reports. Who wants to go first?
You go. Um, so childcare meeting last Monday was moved to this Monday, so I will be doing that tonight. And, oh, I don't know, so like Dean said, I did go to the. Safety risk assessment with Courtney and Zach, and then Bill and I took a tour. Um, with the stack of secondary roads, and then I also spent a lot of time. Uh, refreshing myself with some OSHA regulations last week, so. That's all I have.
I can go. Uh, last week, Monday, we have baitings. Uh, on Tuesday, I met with Mike Schulte about the brick building. Tuesday at noon, I had border health meeting. And that is it. I don't have any in my schedule this week. I know it. Um, last Monday, baiting meeting, and then at noon, RSVP, Tuesday, CCGP. Wednesday, I came in, tried to figure out. Possible countertop solutions for when we move, when the.
Ultra temporary?
Yeah, and I think we may, I think we've got to fix some for all the department, for the three departments. The auditors already got a countertop. Um, this week I have newspaper and radio, and Wednesday I have a construction update meeting with. Um, bathing and SEH.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Scott, for all your extra, above and beyond help with this courthouse remodel. It's truly appreciated.
Statue of Fame, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a Scott Johnson statue. Um, last week I had. I don't even remember, I'm just gonna go into the, oh, I didn't have any official meetings. Um, I did reach out, and I don't know if this, why I record on this, but the IJ, which is, um, Iowa Jobs of America's graduates. There's three of us that are gonna go talk to some Carroll students about leadership qualities. I think that's next week though, right?
No, it's the twenty-seventh. I'm doing that too, Courtney.
You and I are on the same.
Yeah.
Gene Miners is too, correct?
Yeah.
He's on Friday, I think.
Cindy and I are on Wednesday.
I'm available, so they can't.
Is that the twenty, yeah, twenty-seventh, yeah.
Something comes up.
And then after the meeting today, I decided to run out to region twelve quick to sign a check. And then I wanted to give you guys just a quick little update on the ambulance. So we went with this G E M T program, which helps reimburse money back to the county for anything that happens with the ambulance department. And in two thousand and seventeen, our total that we got reimbursed back was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. So far this year, for. Revenue, it is up more than thirty thousand dollars that we have received back from, so that, I mean, that's an awesome thing. I'm so glad. I, whose idea, what, it was Jamie's maybe?
Daryl Bakers.
Daryl Bakers to implement this. I mean, it was a phenomenal idea.
And I think that's really all I have.
Newspaper are your last two.
Yeah, that's all I have. Courtney, do you have anything for next week?
You have a, whatever license and. Cloud wine. The special five-day permit. Um, gonna be in, looks like.
When is that?
Uh, it looks like November sixteenth is when the event is. And then in, this next, next Monday's the second, right? Sure I'm on the right week.
Yeah, I know you are.
So nine thirty, I have Iowa negotiations and consulting services presentation.
So that's that company I had.
Yes. Yes.
And look, nothing else for Monday, and then it looks like on Tuesday, we have a meeting with Biden for some industries at nine o'clock.
No, you don't have to. I just invited Stephanie.
That's.
If there is nothing else, I'm gonna change a motion for a change. Just a motion and a second. All those in favor, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries for your turn.